Good evening, Council. Before we call the meeting to order, we have had this happen in the last 16 years where a Monday night falls on September 11th. So in remembrance of that day and the Americans that lost their lives, we'll take a moment of silence before we begin our meeting. And of course, we also salute the first responders in our community for all that they do. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We will call the meeting to order. This evening, we have Rebecca in place of Joyce. Rebecca, please call. Somebody said Joy Jr., that's what was about to come out, I'm sorry.
Flornoy, Hallie, Anderson, Revolinsky, Rasmussen, Thompson, Hamilton.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, any additions to this evening's agenda? Now, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have minutes from the August 28 meeting. We have approval of the September 8 payroll of $126,740.40. We have a resolution of employment in the police department, approval of liquor license for Revelations, The Cider House, and Pep Stop, and we have an amended amount in the One of those corrections was the SM Hentiges &amp; Sons that you see listed there for over $150,000. It was actually a $10,000 charge, so that was a big part of the reduction there, so we do not have any claims above $75,000. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no public appearances this evening, so we'll...
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, we got everybody now. So we'll move on then to our resolutions, action items, and ordinances, and the first will be considering the Lincoln Avenue manhole installation as a final project. Mel, good evening.
Good evening. The Lincoln Avenue sewer was approximately 500 feet of sanitary sewer that was constructed along Lincoln to serve the new quadplexes that are being built out there. Part of the project included constructing a 15-foot-deep manhole over the existing sewer, which is beyond the capacity of what the city crews can do in-house. So this particular project was bid out, and Drish construction was the low bid. The total project cost was $14,798.55. Because it's such a small job, there is not a performance bond for this project, but the manhole did pass applicable testing, so I would recommend approval of this project as final.
Okay. Any questions for Melanie, Counsel? If not, I entertain a motion, as recommended, to accept the project as final.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes. And next, we have the consideration of the Adams Avenue Sewer Project as final, and Steve Hausner from French Rentecce is with us. Steve, good evening.
Good evening. So I believe you have two pay estimates, a pay estimate number two, final quantities, and a pass at number three, retainage, as well as my statement of completion or declaration of completion. Just to point out on, if you're looking at pay estimate number two, final quantities, the total construction price is $46,158.80. The contract is only $43-some-odd-thousand. The original bid was actually $53,322. When we do change orders, you lose what the original bid was, so I just wanted to point that out. Otherwise, the project went smooth, and we're now waiting for Drish construction to begin construction on the paving over this project.
Okay, great. Thank you, Steve. Any questions, Counsel, for Steve?
One question. When do you expect paving to begin and be finished?
We had a pre-construction conference for the paving already, and the contractor, Drish, anticipated starting late September, early October. There is a little issue with the gas main, one of Alliance's gas mains, so it's kind of dependent on that right at the moment. They think they can get to it potentially in the next two to three weeks. So hopefully, we're not going to be too far off the beginning of October, but we'll have to wait and see.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Any other questions? Now, I entertain a motion to accept the project as final.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Motion passes. Next, Counsel, we will get a report on the downtown facade project. Melanie?
Right. The action item that's attached to your packet is a letter from Curtis Architecture declaring the project complete. There is a one-year guarantee on this project in addition to manufacturer's warranties for windows and such. But because most of my projects get to be buried underground and we never see them again, hopefully, I had fun with wrapping this project up and wanted to do a little slideshow of the before and after. It's been a long project, and having the side-by-sides are helpful.
Well, I'll tell you, before you do that, let's put the whole thing in context also because, you know, we really made our application for this about three years ago for the grant portion of it, which was approved. We appointed a citizen committee to pick the architect and contractor. Once that was done, we started to formally engage property owners, and at one time, we were working with 15 different property owners. We ended up with eight. I bring that out because as much as the grant monies are there to really assist this project, and I think we're probably in the neighborhood of 65% of cost a project, what the property owners received, they're still putting in a lot of their own money. So we really do appreciate those property owners in the square that were willing participants in this project because without them, we wouldn't have been able to do it. Go ahead, Mel.
Yep, and Jason's going to try and scroll through this as we go. We've got the Elks Building on the west side of the square. It just kind of goes pretty fast. During construction, they took off the awning, then painted the siding, and as Katie pointed out at one time, the S has always been crooked. It was not crooked as part of this project, so for you OCD people, it was always crooked. We've got some great lights to break up the storefronts on this building, and then also you see the Crest Jewel Building got new brickwork later this fall, or earlier this spring, I should say.
So then that's the far-right, smaller portion of that building.
The smaller one, yep.
Where the alley would be.
Where the alley would be, exactly. Yep, that is also owned by Elks, and so they got a new window there. That is where their Elks, where their office is, so they appreciate having a little bit tighter fit to that facade right there.
It was a nice bonus to that whole, the whole look of that area.
Yep. And then we have Central Park Furnishings, owner Neil Cunningham cleaned out, cleaned off the paint on the upper portion of the brick, repaired a lot of the cement board, and I believe he also got new storefront windows to help with that energy efficiency. Neil worked a lot on picking his own colors and design on this project more than maybe some of the owners, and you could really see his personal touch in this one compared to the other buildings. Let's see, and then we have Hal and Rita Goldstein's building, where Chickadee's and the Collector's store is. They got new awnings as well as cement board. There are some metal headers there that got, that you see the rusting that got painted, and just cleaned up more, this was more of a, more paint and finish than anything really structurally or energy efficient on it. I believe they did get a new entrance door to the upstairs apartments, though.
Was there also work that went on down the Court Street portion of that project, or was that separate?
That was separate.
Separate.
Yep. And then we have the one that I think everyone is talking about, Brian and Jewel McDonald's building. If I need to remind you what it looked like before, here you go. And then some of these buildings, we did find the historic photos. These were used as part of the design process, but I thought I'd include them in here for reference because then during construction, you actually see the Zillman's furniture and Jeffshure County Extension signs that were in that picture above. Those signs included asbestos material.
Jason, hold that one.
The contractor was approached by some Zillman family members to try and save that sign. Once we started talking about the asbestos in it and how it would have to be handled, the family was glad to know that that sign remains intact behind cement boards, so it is still there, and I said, "Well, maybe in the future, we'll have a better way of handling asbestos, and then we can take that sign down." But those signs are preserved, they're just behind new layers of cement board.
Mel, talk about what the original plan was for the building at this stage and what changed.
At this stage, there was going to be a similar facade put back up to that stucco. The original stucco had pebbles implanted in it, but what was more proposed would be along what is on the Revelations Building, more of a smooth, rubberized-type stucco material that would, it would not crack like what was on here before, but would still give the Art Deco feel that was part of this building. When it got to this stage and we saw, one, how good of a shape the brick was on underneath it, but then also all of those support beams, there were not as many holes in the brick as what was really expected. So at that point, they chose to restore the brick and, you know, especially the windows. If I could back up, you know, to the Elks Building, as much as everyone would have liked to see that facade come down, there was enormous change to the bricks and the windows, especially on the Elks Building over the years. So to restore that brick was a whole other level of reconstruction, whereas this one really had remained intact, and that Art Deco stucco that was on there before preserved the brick a lot better than some of the other facades in town. So that's how this ended up being in such good shape that for relatively little additional, we were able to leave it. One thing that was taken out of the original design were the awnings, that fabric awnings, when it would have been the stucco, we would have had money for fabric awnings, but because of the brick, that was something that was taken out of the project in order to preserve the brick. Those two color swatches are what the owner, Brian and Jewel, have kind of in mind. The area was prepared structurally for future awnings, and same with choosing the colors. Jewel looked into what a Tom Watanawara awning had available so that we could plan for the future as funding is available for her to put awnings in the future, and I believe she's raising money for the awnings.
Good.
And then we have Davis &amp; Palmer Real Estate, owned by Chris and Debbie Davis. This was the only building where we were allowed to do the front as well as the Burlington side, so Chris really benefited from tuck pointing on his job. We've got a historic photo here that shows how much brickwork is on that building. Go ahead. One thing that you see here and in the historic picture before is there was a, I'm not supposed to call it a deck, but I don't know what else to call it. It's a fake deck that was out there in the original building. It's not safe for anyone to stand on, but they did restore that original feature below those windows. You also see that the window heights were restored on the front side of the building. So this building, and here's a finished picture, it really brought it back to a lot of its original character. And with the tuck pointing, the Burlington side of that building had a lot of damage from the salt of what used to be Highway 34, and Chris had saved some bricks from work over time, and then also they found some matching. And instead of tuck pointing a large area, they actually focused on the bottom three or four rows. If you look close, you'll see a difference in the color, but they went with a brick that's going to withstand the salt a lot more, but those were also the most damaged brick of the project. So Chris benefited from a lot of, I'll say, structural improvements to his building. Chris and Deb. And then Jim Horse's Building ERA Real Estate, we wanted to make sure to keep with the red awning, their signature color, so added the red accent around the doors, kept the awning. A lot of repainting here as well. And then the last couple buildings were the building where Indian Cafe is and Brown Law Office. This is historic photos of those buildings. See the Indian Cafe building beforehand? During, you can see that the upper windows, that the transoms were restored back to the historic, as well as benefited from cement board on the lower part to help seal up those windows. Okay, and then the Brown?
It's a nice tuck pointing work on that building, too.
Yes. Yep.
Yeah.
And they also, you can't really see it in the picture, they've got an upstairs entrance off to the side. They did benefit from a little bit of side work. I believe they got a new roof on that entrance and a new door as well. And then last, the Brown Law Office Building. Visually, changing the colors of the area around the door as well as adding a couple awnings and touching up the paint on this project as well. And I believe they did also get new storefront windows as part of this, again, to help with the energy efficiency. So overall, as the mayor said, there is eight businesses, or eight property owners that participated. I believe if we counted it up, it's a total of 15 addresses affected, so it was, although it was a long project, it was a very good project, and so unless there's any questions, I would recommend the council accept this project as final.
Thank you, Mel. I think it's a wonderful addition to the downtown. It was great that we could be partners with these property owners, and I know there's a lot of back and forths. We really appreciate all the patience you showed with property owners going through the process and connecting them to the architect and the contractor. There was a lot of work you put in, Mel, so it's much appreciated. So Counsel, and we will, we will have a ribbon cutting. We're talking about doing something in the downtown sometime in the next couple of weeks and get all of the property owners together and celebrate what they've done. Okay? So entertain a motion to accept the project as final?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mel. We have a letter of engagement with the Allers Cooley Firm.
And this item did go in front of Water and Sewers Committee, so if Doug, you want to add anything, please do. For the Step Two Sanitary Sewer, which is the Interceptor Sewer replacement around the east side of the community, I'm pleased to say that the archaeological study is complete and that there was nothing of significant found, so we can proceed with land acquisition on that side. There are approximately 37 property owners affected, including 64 parcels. The next steps will be to follow Iowa code and providing proper notice to these property owners and having a public hearing. If the council signs this letter of engagement this evening, Allers will provide those proceedings to meet these steps. This allows us to meet Iowa code, and if any of these properties would require condemnation, we have the necessary steps completed ahead of time. But in addition to being, meeting Iowa code, it's a good way to reach, following Iowa code allows you to reach out to the property owners, have public meetings, have public hearings, and really get them involved in the process before JCG, the land agent, the negotiator, knocks on their door. So we're going to be following those steps over the next couple of weeks, and you'll have an action item at your next council meeting. JCG, who is the negotiator, and Allers have both worked with the city and as well worked with each other. JCG suggested using Allers as kind of a neutral third party that is familiar with these rules, but also being able to move these, I mean, we're talking, I think, probably the largest easement acquisition the city has ever taken, taken under, and we are in an EPA compliance order in order to get this project completed. So we feel like this is a good way to keep the project moving forward.
The only thing I would add is that it's not a requirement, but we'd like to have all the easements in place by June of 2018. That's the goal. 64 parcels.
Yep.
Great. Ambitious, but good. Thank you. So, yeah, and I do agree, there's, you know, there's potentially a lot of things that can get tangled during that process, and to have outside counsel would be good for this type of a project, so. Entertain a motion then to approve the letter of engagement with the Aller Cooley's firm?
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second, Flornoy? Second by Thompson?
Too many years, Mayor.
What's that?
Too many years.
Yeah. No? Just too many years.
Yes, yes. Exactly.
Joy, I mean, you've spoken.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Counsel, in my report, a couple of items. One is tomorrow evening, we'll begin looking at applications for the open city administrator position. As of last Friday, we had received seven applications, the deadline, I believe, was today, so I did not speak with Pat today, but I'm certain there will probably be more. So we'll start a review process of those, and if you recall, the last time we went through this, there are steps that Pat will kind of run us through in terms of ranking those as we look them over. We will also choose those that will go through the first interview phase, which would be a Skype interview, and that would take place in a week. I believe that the 19th is our date for that. And then we'll set our final candidates at that point in time, should we find some final candidate.
Can you remind us about the timing tomorrow? He's going to have them available?
Five p.m. They'll be available tomorrow afternoon. I think Pat is going to be here around 1:00 or 2:00 p.m., so I think from 2:00 to 5:00 they'll be available, if you'd like to come in and look at them ahead of time.
And then we're going to all meet at 5:00?
At 5:00, yes. Okay. Any questions on that, Counsel? Okay. The other thing I wanted to mention, Darrell and I had a meeting with David Vollmer, who was our Alliant Customer Service Representative, and we've been talking with him about downtown lighting. So he's gotten back to us, and there are two things. One is the strength and intensity of the downtown lights that we have right now. We get a lot of complaints that it's very dark down there. His engineers are looking at what strength of lighting that they can put in there, and he will be testing those. But he's also gotten back to us with some of the very tall lighting that we could potentially replace, some of the older, we refer to affectionately as Brontosaurus lights in the downtown. We have about, we have 53 of them placed around the downtown, and some of them are rusted bases and unsightly, and they provide good light, but Alliant has a program where we can lease from them. There's an upfront cost, but then there's also a monthly leasing fee. They take care of all of the maintenance and bulb changing and that sort of thing, but he'll be coming back to us with some figures and a presentation sometime, hopefully within the next month. The other thing I wanted to mention as well is that beginning of the year, I started to receive concerned messaging from some citizens about Alliant's plans to change all of their analog meters at homes right now and places of business to smart meters. They're digital meters that will read information a lot more efficiently from homes and properties, but will transmit them with radio frequencies. And we went through this with our water meter program, where people who have sensitivity to those types of meters were very concerned that that technology would be forced on them in some way. So we've had some discussions with Alliant over the months, and they've done their research, and they're going to do a presentation sometime in October for the whole community. Their intention at that time is to introduce the meters and the technology to explain what they are, but also assure customers that they will have a mechanism to opt out or to have their meter placed where they feel it is safe in ways that will satisfy those customers that are concerned or have those kinds of health concerns. So I thought that was promising from their side so that we don't have a community mutiny on our hands that we need to manage with, you know, with our utility. But I expect that most people will feel satisfied by what's presented to them, and that'll take place sometime in October. That's everything I had. We'll move on to our committee reports. Water and Sewer Utilities Committee.
Right. We had a meeting on Friday morning. We had about six items that we took motions on. Well, one was for a water adjustment for filling of a swimming pool. The city has a policy against making adjustments to the sewer side of the bill for swimming pool filling. They do have an option to buy a separate meter and meter that water separately from the sewer, so we denied that request. We also had a request for an extraterritorial sewer connection. This property is within 300 feet of one of our lines, and in exchange for their signing an agreement to voluntarily annex into the property, should we decide to do that, we're going to go ahead and connect them up to the sewer.
Where's that located, Doug?
Off of the Middle Glasgow Road, right near Glasgow. Rathburn Regional Water Association has approached the city, wants to negotiate the existing contract we have with them, so we did take a motion to send a message to them to send a separate proposal, what they want to talk about. We don't know what it is exactly, but we're willing to receive it and see what they have to say. So that's on the table right now. We already talked about the engagement letter with Allers. We did, took a motion to not consider any multi-use easements in conjunction with Step Two in reference to the trail system that was discussed at the last meeting. So that's on hold. We took a motion not to consider that option. And the last one was, we had a new application suggested for a umbrella application for all right-of-way work done within the city, include everything in streets, alleys, easements, anywhere. It's a single application, it's about five or six pages long, and we approved that application.
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
That's all we have.
Thank you. Any questions?
I did have one question. Is that application that you're talking about one that people are going to have to fill out before anything's done in the right-of-way, or any utility that's going to do any work in the right-of-way?
Anyone that's doing any work in the right-of-way has to fill one of these out.
Anyone that has work to do in the right-of-way will fill that out.
That's right.
Okay.
And it's really designed to catch any unlicensed people doing work, uninsured individuals, and have a single application for all right-of-way work. So if you want to plant a tree in the right-of-way, you have to come here and...
That was, that was my next question. That would include something as small as planting a tree up to a contractor that's putting in a new water line on the opposite side of the street from the existing water line, that kind of thing.
Everything.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug. The Environmental Franchise and Utilities Committee.
Yes, we did meet on Friday evening, actually, briefly. There was just one item, was to refine the survey that we had mentioned in our last report that we plan to use to get a feeling for how people are willing, how much people are willing to have the additional charge for additional collection, trash collection. Currently, residents are allowed two 33-gallon barrels that they supply, and... Currently, residents are allowed 233-gallon barrels that they supply, and the proposal from Waste Management is to have a 96-gallon container, same size as our recycling bins, but there would be an additional $1.50 a month charge for that. And so there was a feeling that we want to get some poll of people, get their input before we finalize our negotiations with Waste Management, and we wanted to just make sure we have the wording really down. And so we reviewed it one more time. Sorry about the communication problem, Martha. But anyway, I think we're there, and it'll be posted very soon. The water bills already have notices for the next two weeks about the yard waste pickup. And so after that, we'll begin actually an insert in the water bill. People have an opportunity to return a little paper ballot if they prefer, but otherwise, it'll be a very simple online ballot that they can get access to our website, and we'll post on the Facebook page. So that's our plan.
John, is this just everyone participate, or no one participate, or is there a choice that you can actually accept the 96-gallon?
Oh, yeah. That's the point. The proposal from Waste Management is either we offer this for everyone or no one. And so that's why we wanted to poll people and see, you know, what the percentages were there. You know, some people, I'm sure, would be happy to pay the extra $1.50 a week, be able to dispose of more trash. They may be. But a lot of people are very, you know, satisfied with the amount that they're allowed to now.
And the other thing, well, the other thing, too, is it might be, it might be good to invite Alliant representative.
Waste Management.
Waste Management representative here to show the size of the container and.
He was here, and he would have come tonight if we asked him to, but again, we're just describing it, it's like identical to the.
Yes, I know the size. We have, we have a sample in the conference room.
The one question I have is that currently, they have two different sizes of recycled bins.
Right.
A big one and a smaller one.
Right.
Is the smaller one going to be an option for people?
I believe it would be.
Or are we all going to be stuck with the big 96 one?
No.
Because with what I put out now, my wife and I are the only two, and we're lucky to have something sitting out once a week.
Sure.
You know, let alone have another monster bin sitting in my garage waiting to go out.
There's many households like yours in this community, Darren. Yeah, he did say that they would have an option for a smaller barrel, but still, there would be the extra charge every week.
But is the extra charge $1.50 a month, even if it's the smaller?
That's how I understood it, and the reason behind it is they're trying to come up with a container that is all the same, all the same shape, so that their machines pick it up, versus now, you may have a metal can, I may have a plastic can, I may have a lid, you may not have a lid. They're trying to get it uniform, so the machine picks it up and does it.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, this is a negotiation.
Yeah.
And my feeling is, yeah, if we have the option for the smaller, personally, I think, I think they do save money if they have mechanical pickup instead of the by-hand pickup. So maybe they could make some consideration there and not charge.
What's the justification for the additional charge? Is it the tipping fees, because they're expecting more waste?
I don't think so. I think that justification is, oh, well, the bin itself is an expense, so we're going to pay those costs through the additional charge.
Keeping in mind that the contract would be a set, it's either, you know, whatever we decide, three years, five years.
Right.
At which point, you know, at the end of that, we can say, okay, you've gotten your fees now.
Yeah. Well, the, okay, because these are the questions that community members are going to ask.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So we're on it, and the survey will be out soon, you should all take it, please. And by the way, the online survey, you can only take on your computer one time. It recognizes you if you come back there, so we don't have to worry about people stuffing the ballot box.
I've got three different computers.
I think they notice your, like, internet.
IP address.
IP address, yeah.
I'll go door to door.
Thank you, John.
Put it on your wife.
Personnel Committee.
All right. We met 6:30 this evening. We were reviewing applications for the Planning and Zoning Assistant. That's a position that will be vacated by Rebecca Loper, who is going to be our new full-time city clerk, coming up very shortly, next month. We narrowed it down to four candidates who we will interview at some point in the near future. It's a busy time, but we want to get them interviewed, so that position can be filled, so that Rebecca can begin training the person before she takes over as city clerk full-time. So we will send, Scott Vaughn was, Chief Vaughn was gracious enough to offer to send a letter to those who will not be interviewed, so I appreciate that. And we appreciate everyone who applied. It's always the same competitive positions, but we have some very solid candidates. So hopefully, we'll be bringing a recommendation for a hire within maybe the next meeting, but no promises. Either the next meeting or the meeting following, by then, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone reporting on the Wayfinding Commission, or is those just minutes that were received from the last?
Those were just minutes.
Yeah, we talked about this meeting last time.
Okay. All right. That concludes our committee reports from our departments. Chief Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you all received my lengthy emails in reference to the weapons that, they have been officially replaced now. We are holding on to the ones that, and like I explained in the email, basically Glock rewards you if you stick with their weapon. They do understand that they make a quality product, and they'll get a lot of repeat customers, and that we're on tight budgets, so they give us quite a bit of trade-in value on our weapons. They've made the same offer, and they've done the same thing they did last time. They get a lot of guns back, they try to keep all guns out, and they offer them to our officers. The time before, I had to make the decision myself, because we didn't have a financial policy in the city. This time, I wanted to bring it in front of the council, because it is the policy, the financial policy, but it's also nice to get, to make sure we're all on the same page. It's kind of a, kind of peculiar each way. Obviously, I don't have a federal firearms dealership, so I can't auction these weapons off. We would save taxpayers money, because instead of shipping these back to Glock, we would get the money out. The Glock would give us from the officers that decide to keep them. We've decided to let the officers only have one, and like I explained in that email, we're going to keep a couple at the department in case we have any malfunctioning weapons or other issues that we have to send our weapons to the lab. Like I said, I think I explained, I appreciate the time, so there is a public record that we are doing this. Obviously, I can't go out and sell used guns on the streets, so I have to be real careful who I'm offering them to. We're only offering them right now to city employees. But if there are any questions, I am more than happy to answer them right now.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. No, I think you're, I know your email to the council explained that, and you do have, provided a list of those, so any questions at this time about the plan to dispose of those weapons that the department does not keep in that way?
You had just mentioned city employees. You mean employees of the police department only, or all city employees?
We're not probably going to have enough to open it up to, we are going to probably open up to our reserve unit, but they're reserve police officers anyway, and considered employees of the police department. A couple of them are struggling with purchasing their own weapons, and this would be a cheaper weapon. The right now, it's just employees of the police department that are police officers.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the chief? If not, then I'd entertain the approval of the surplus list of weapons.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Council, if there's any other business, we'll see everyone tomorrow at 5:00. And remember, if you would like to look at the applications a little bit more informally tomorrow afternoon, Pat will be here. I believe it's 1:00 to 5:00, but maybe 2:00. Okay. Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
Don't forget Kids' Day on Saturday.